Hello, good afternoon. Welcome to the 8th of December Governance Committee Meeting. I'm councillor Julie Grokot, I will be chairing the meeting this afternoon. Can I please request that all mobile telephones and other equipment is switched to silence so as not to disturb the conduct of the meeting, please? And please note that there is no fire test planned for today, so if we do need to evacuate the building, please take instruction from the town hall staff and we will assemble at Tudor Square. Because we're all sat in a nice little round, I'm just going to whizz round the room for introductions. So I will start on my immediate left, and if you can just say who you are and your role, please. Start with David, thank you.
I'm David Hollis, I'm the interim director of legal and governance.
I'm Jay Bell, the National Credit Services Officer, taking the notes today.
I'm councillor Mary Lee, representing Arnold Ward.
I'm councillor Mike Weaver, West Egglisfield Ward.
I'm councillor Sue Alston, Fullwood Ward.
I'm councillor Richard Williams from Stannings Ward, and I'm a substitute for my colleague, Penny Baker.
I'm Robert Parkin, Deputy Monetary Officer, here to present a paper.
I'm Laurie Brennan, I'm Head of Policy and Partnerships, I'm here for starting on the agenda or the main item.
I'm Emily Standbrook Shaw, Policy and Improvement Officer in Laurie's team, and I'm here for the governance review item as well.
I'm councillor Brian Lodge, member for Burnley Ward.
Christine Gilligan-Cubo, councillor for Hillsborough Ward.
Hello, my name's Diane Hurst, I'm a member for Richmond Ward.
I'm councillor Mark Jones, Burngriff Ward.
Thank you everyone, can I ask please, do we have any apologies for absence?
Chair, received the one apology from councillor Penny Baker and councillor Richard Williams as his substitute member, and also Joe Otten could be late but is planning on attending.
Thank you, Jay, item three, we have no items where we will need to exclude the press or the public, so moving swiftly on to item four, do we have any declarations of interest, please? Okay, and then item five is minutes of the previous meeting to approve as a correct record, minutes of the meeting held on the 10th of November. Is everyone okay with those minutes, please? Yeah, thank you. We do not have any public questions or petitions that have been brought to my attention for item six, so item seven, we're really flying through this, Laurie, I understand you are going to give us a presentation this afternoon with Emily, so you're very welcome and thank you for coming along.
Okay, thank you. So we're here to give you a brief update on progress of the governance review. Last time we were here, the committee agreed the scope for the review and officially launched it, and since then we've started the engagement phase of the review based around the themes and key questions that we agreed during the scoping phase. We've got those in your slide pack just as a reminder. So we're looking at capacity and resource, citizen and community engagement and participation, decision making and delegation, working practices, the overall structure of the system, and equality, diversity and inclusion, communication and information availability. So that's broadly what we're looking at. So we're underway with a lot of activity at the moment with those three key groups that we identified through the scope of the review. So first of all, with members, the online survey is live, as of this morning there were eight responses, so grateful for any further support and communication in encouraging colleagues to fill in, but it is running until the 2nd of January, so there is plenty of time for that. We've been running drop-in sessions following each of the December round of policy committee meetings, which have been reasonably attended so far, and we've got several more lined up over the next couple of weeks. And we're aiming to get on the January LACs meeting to discuss the issue around how well policy committees and LACs are working together. The second group is citizens, again we've got the survey live, as of this morning we'd had 41 responses to that, we've had a limited response to the invitation we kind of sent out to say if you would like to talk to us about the review and engage with us, get in touch. So we're looking to be a little bit more proactive around that and actually kind of set up in-person and online events and invite people to it rather than wait for them to get in touch with us, so to speak. So we'll be looking to do that after Christmas. And then the third group that we've targeted is officers, we've got the online survey, again, as of this morning we'd had 28 responses, and over the next few weeks we're attending various officer groups to hear their feedback in person, so we've been to the equality subgroup, we've got the Heads of Service Network next week, we're going to PLTs, so lots of activities underway hearing from officers. So yeah, this engagement phase will carry on till mid-January, we've got the dates in your slide pack of some of the activity we've got planned, and then once we get to the middle end of January we'll start bringing this all together and working with you to start action planning, developing recommendations and solutions to whatever we find through this engagement part of the review. And that's really all we have, it's a very brief update, but there is lots going on, but at the moment there's not much yet to report, so over to you really for any questions or comments.
Thanks Emily, so when everyone's got that nice lull between Christmas and the new year, members and officers, we expect you answering the survey, so that's something for us all to look forward to. But yeah, it's good to see that there is a lot going on, and I know a lot of work has gone into this previously with the committee getting us to this point in time, so does anyone have any questions or comments at this stage, please?
One quick comment, Chair, thank you. I did send, following our conversation and briefing earlier in the week, I did send the link around again, and I've received several comments back that people have started the survey but of having to save it because they've got so much to say and there are so many questions, it takes too long to go through all in one sitting. So I don't think we're not interested, it's just taking more time than we've got at one shot.
We'll probably have to factor some time in then to do all the analysis then if there's plenty, we're expecting plenty of comments back, but that's actually really positive to hear actually, thank you.
Councillor James.
Thank you Chair. In terms of the groups that you're engaging, are schools and colleges part of that process, both the staff of those schools and colleges and also the pupils? Because what we're doing is putting in place a system of democracy for the future, and those that will be having to grow up with that should have an input, I would have thought. So is there any opportunity or any engagement ongoing yet?
No, that isn't a group we'd thought we had identified so far. I think we've been thinking about getting people's views and experiences of people who have interacted with the committee system so far to see how it's working, but take the point that actually this is a system that will be with us for a long time and we need to make sure that we're hearing a wide range of views. We could, yeah, we'll think about that in how we do, in how we kind of promote the public facing sessions.
There is, this is a really interesting question actually, because we've said from the start, haven't we, in the work of this committee and in the scoping we did, that we were trying to look at the early impressions of the committee system, how it's bedding in, what we've learned from the months we've been in, and we're into the third round of meetings now. But maybe members through the working group, we're going to be, as we're working together on the sort of the review content and as we develop the recommendations for council, some of the things we should think about are, how do we use it as a way to own it for Sheffield, for the system of democracy for Sheffield that almost promoted as how we do business and how people and different groups and different communities can have a voice in that as part of that long-term development of the system. And so it might be something even if we struggle to get people directly involved right now to say, how's it felt to you? Because that might be quite a hard question to schoolchildren and schools maybe, but there's something about that long-term development piece, about how they see it as that route into engaging members and certainly in democratic process. So shall we, can we come back to it as part of some of the working group sessions, because I think it's a really good question.
We did do a piece of work, didn't we, with the youth cabinet, and I think it may be worth touching base with then and getting some views, you know, because it's something they are aware of and have engaged with us before, so I think that's probably a sensible starting point as anywhere to do that work. I mean, the other thing I suppose for bearing in mind in the future is, certainly in the secondary school system, they do, I don't know what it's called, local democracy or citizenship or something, don't they? And there may be something that we could, you know, feed into that as we progress, just to make sure, because I think, you know, it's really important that young people are involved in local democracy. And I know some of us in the north of the city who are on the committee, you know, we have town and parish councils, and we are very good at engaging young people and allowing them to come in, use the local town halls for meetings and those sorts of things. And so I think there's possibly a point where other schoolchildren may be missing out on that opportunity, and so we perhaps need to look at how we fill that gap, although I appreciate that's not particularly pertinent to this, but I think it's something we should perhaps have on the radar. Any other comments from anyone?
Councillor Williams.
Could I just ask for a point of clarification, please? The drop-ins and drop-in sessions for members, is the one for communities, parks and leisure still going ahead?
I've just been informed that that meeting isn't going ahead, is that correct?
The actual committee meeting, definitely going ahead.
It is going ahead.
I've been told it's been cancelled.
Oh, right.
That's why I just showed you, it was cancelled on my end.
I'm seeking clarification, if the meeting is going ahead, the drop-in will go ahead.
Right.
And if the drop-in, if the meeting is cancelled, we'll arrange another opportunity for members of that committee to feed in, maybe an online team session or something similar, but we'll make sure that everyone has an opportunity to feed in to the process, is that okay?
So I think that's just making sure the liaise with you, Richard, and we get that right, isn't it? Because we don't want to miss that, because that's quite an important piece, isn't it? Okay, all happy? I think that very short debate doesn't really do justice to the huge amount of work that's gone in, but I know certainly a lot of time was spent on the last committee meeting and there's been a lot of work done in the background on that, so thank you both very much for that. Can I just ask members, please, if we are happy to note the update we've received this afternoon, please? All happy with that? Thank you. Item seven, Laurie, have I got you right, are you doing this on your own or is it a double act? Oh no, sorry, it's Robert.
Robert.
It's Robert, yeah. Item eight, grants, loans and guarantees, delegation review.
Thank you, yeah, Laurie, you're very welcome to take this. Okay, so good afternoon, members. Yeah, so this report is bringing forward a very specific element of the governance within the council, and specifically it's looking at the location of decision making in relation to grants, loans and guarantees. Sounds very dry, but very specifically there are three elements to this, and the committee today is not being asked to devise and design specific wording, it's, the ask today of you is to consider the issue, discuss it and consider whether you'd like to invite officers to go away and come back with more detailed and specific changes that could be incorporated into the constitution. So really it's about the discussion today, and as I say, it's about the location of decision making. At the moment, the constitution provides that in relation to the provision of grants, so the acceptance of grant funding and then decision making on the appointments and award of grants, is either with officers on delegation below certain threshold levels, and that's £750,000, and then some other specifics that are set out in the appendix. Above that, rather than those decisions being located within the policy committees of the council in line with that remit, all decisions go straight to the finance policy subcommittee, so that the policy committees have not had a formal role in relation to grant aid and decisions on receiving it and also appointment. So there's a question there, and it's set out in the paper, as to whether through discussion you'd like to invite officers to go away and design how specifically there could be a role for the policy committees in formal terms, and that could be achieved in a number of ways. The report also sets out a question in relation specifically to the committees, parks, sorry, the communities, parks and leisure committee. The way that the remit is described for that committee is it appears to cross-cut award decisions where in relation to grants, where the recipient is the voluntary sector, and that appears to be a cause of, potentially a cause of confusion, because of course grants could be made to a number of different types of entity as a partner, whether they are voluntary sector or commercial or otherwise. So there's a question there about whether there is a need to clarify the roles, the role of the communities, parks and leisure committee, to say that actually the role of that committee is, for example, the encouragement and development of the voluntary sector in relation to delivery and monitoring and support, but actually where a grant is proposed to be managed and awarded to an entity, including a voluntary sector entity, then it should be better placed with a committee, a policy committee that has the remit for the subject matter. The final limb for the discussion today is in relation to annually recurrent grants, and we've got Mark here, if you'd like to join us, Mark, Wassell is within the finance team and raised a question on behalf of the Chief Finance Officer, the section 151 Officer, in relation to the efficiency of decision making around grants that are annually recurrent. So there's a grant that appear to be consistent from year to year and where there is no material change in the terms on which the grant is accepted and also managed. At the moment, shifting from the committee, sorry, from the cabinet and leader model of governance, historically decisions were made at individual executive member level, and moving into the committee system, the exception for these types of grants has not translated into the current form of the constitution. So I will invite Mark to say some words on that to help illustrate the question, if I can, Chair.
Just on the annually recurrent grants, there's about 60 of them, and in recent years they would have been approved on block by the cabinet member. As I say, it's, these grants are very quite fixed, rigid, they've been going on for years, et cetera, and they will probably continue to go on for years. So rather than perhaps sending it to cabinet members it used to go, or committee, given that the nature of these grants is fixed as such, I think it was one of the options, could we get it signed off by the Director of Finance, and then Finance could review each and every individual grant offer for any changes, as and when it comes in, and get those quickly signed off and sent back to the funders. So I don't think there's any material risk by changing the approval to Director of Finance from cabinet member, and it's probably one of the lesser blocks of, in terms of interest in grants, than perhaps the new stuff that comes in, which is more risky and of more interest. So these don't really generate much interest, and we're just trying to look at, myself and Robert, ways of perhaps improving grant procedures in terms of accepting funded so they can focus more on the high value new stuff that comes in that does generate lots of attention.
Thank you, Mark. So just a final points before I pass it back to yourself, Chair. So just to summarise, the three limbs, as I've mentioned, it's thinking about the location of decision making, whether you'd like to invite us to develop a role for the policy committees in relation to the receipt of grants and decisions on their award, noting that at the moment it's either located with officers below a specified threshold of £750,000, and then some other sort of detailed points on circumstances, or the finance subcommittee. There's a question on annually recurrent grants, if you'd like us to develop a way to make for an efficient decision making process in exceptional and very limited circumstances. And then finally, it's the communities, parks and leisure committee. The role which is described in the remit, which appears to suggest that where a decision is made on the appointments of a grant and the recipient is the voluntary sector, and it appears to be reserved to that committee, question mark, should some form of clarification be developed? Thank you, Chair, happy to answer any questions.
Thank you both. Just before I go to members, I think David'd like to come and give us some more information.
Probably just a bit more of the historical background of why, how we've ended up where we are, which Robert probably won't be aware of because he wasn't here at the time. So grants, previously under the executive model, some were reserved to cabinet, some were reserved to a cabinet member or cooperative executive member, some were delegated to officers. The general approach that we took was that all decisions that were, and so this was no different, so all decisions that were previously with cabinet or a cabinet member would then go to policy committees, and that those that were with officers remained with officers. So that level of having individual cabinet members take out has gone, so more has gone up to policy committees. With grants in specifically, they were all dealt with in one place in the constitution, and one of the issues with them is where we are an accountable body. And where we're an accountable body, I think the thinking was is that that presents, because of the risk of clawback, that presents an overall financial risk, that the level of grants that we are accepting where we are subject to clawback is a financial consideration, and that's why everything went to finance subcommittee. I think on reflection, and that includes the individual awards of grants, because we just lifted and shifted it into finance subcommittee, I think we can reflect on whether keeping it all together is the right place, or whether we separate out the financial oversight from being accountable body and then the individual award of grants, and I think that's probably one of the things we might want to consider. With regard to the grant aid reference in the communities, parks and leisure, the remit of each policy committee is taken from the council's structure chart, and grant aid was just the wording that was used within the structure chart, within the particular directorate, and therefore it just, again, it got, it made its way in there without realising that that might cause a conflict or an apparent conflict. There shouldn't have been one because grant award, as I've said, was always intended to be finance subcommittee, although we are looking at whether that should remain the case. But it does cause a bit of a confusion, because of course, taken at its face value, that could be all grant aid, not just where it relates to those in the VCF or community type grants, but those which are economic development and things like that. So I think we do need some clarification on where things sit.
Thank you, David, and I've got Sue and then Mary.
Thank you, yeah, just some initial sort of comments and questions, I think, really. Just sort of thinking back to last year's discussions, I don't actually remember us discussing this at all. I don't remember us discussing that at all, and I do think that maybe if we had, we wouldn't have necessarily agreed for it all to go to finance sub. There probably is a role for finance subcommittee or S and R in terms of large overarching grants and where there's significant financial risk, I don't think we would sort of argue with that too much, but I think in general, grants, certainly grants for specific areas should go to the relevant policy committee. Just looking back to before we had a committee system, we're talking about a lot of grants being signed off just by a cabinet member, and there's a suggestion that might move to a finance director, I just wondered if we could be clear, how was that cabinet member held accountable and how were their decisions published? So how did we know and how could we challenge if we didn't agree with it? What was the democratic accountability for that? Because we do need to think about the democratic accountability for all these decisions. And my last comment is just that any grant that aimed specifically at a clear area of the city should probably actually go down to LACs rather than a policy committee. And I'll shut up there for now.
Who would like first to add?
Just to sort of kick off, I might need to rely on others to talk about the historical position. Just though for clarity, I don't think that in the presentation that there shouldn't have been a proposal that, well, okay, I need to be clear, that the proposal that a finance director makes a very summary decision across a number of areas, as Mark's described, I think that's in the very strictly limited circumstances where we are able to define what is an annually recurring grant and where we're comfortable on the drafting, that it can be approved at officer level, i.e. it is not so significant that members wish to hold that decision themselves. So I think on the design, it would always entail a decision in a committee unless it's below a certain threshold and for officers. In terms of the historical position, I'm afraid I couldn't assist, but I'm conscious that David may.
On the common and recurring gra, sorry, the grants, is that the acceptance, Mark, that was being dealt with?
Yes, it was, yeah, the high level approval in the report that spelled out all the caveats, and here's the 60 grants that's approved, subject to finance and or legal review in the individual terms and conditions. I mean, just to add, the new grants that are coming in now, in the last two or three, certainly since Covid, have doubled, whether they're high value or low value. We used to get about 60 new ones, as well as annual recurrence and ongoing, we're getting about heading for 100 plus every year now, so there's more and more decisions to be taken, either at officer level or member.
Yeah, I think, thank you, Mark, I think that clarifies it, so it would have been taken as an individual cabinet member decision, but I think what we've got to remember is that there are decisions about grants coming in, which then might just be used, that just come in and are used just to fund council activities, and then there's decisions about grants going out, and I think we probably need to be more nuanced in our delegations around this and how the constitution separates those two out. With regard to LACs, and yes, I agree, there probably is a role for that, we have said that the six-month review isn't picking up, is picking up the role and the interaction between LACs and policy committees, but I think it is recognised that we need to do a piece of work about LACs anyway, and I think grants out is definitely one of those things that will be in the consideration for that. Was there anything else I didn't pick up, Sue?
I don't think so, I might come back if I think of anything, thank you.
Okay, we've got councillor Lee, councillor Williams and then councillor James.
My question's about the recurrent grants, because I just, have you got an example of what that might be? I'm sure if you told me what it is, I'd realise what they were.
They can range from everything from adult education, they're very fixed and they're all on year on year, to some of the more obscure ones like the Higher Education Funding Council, which is pension liabilities for ex-employees, it can cover broadly the big public health grants, but they're usually discussed in meetings, in budgets anyway. So, and then there's a whole range of smaller grants across all committees that really, school milk, free school meals, that you really can't do much with them, it's not like you could question it, well, do we accept this or not? It's been going on for X years, it will probably go on for X years, the terms and conditions don't vary greatly. And my team tried to minimise the amount of time that we now spend on these grants because of the volume of, because they're established, we know what we're doing, et cetera, but we try to focus more time on high value, high risk, new grants that are coming in, which would be more of interest and risk and relevance to Sheffield City Council, hopefully.
So the grants, the recurrent grants, that maybe have all been wrapped up, saw some of them wrapped up in one package and gone to cabinet?
Approvals, yeah. I mean, what used to happen years ago, perhaps before we even did that, each grant individually would get approved, it would, you know, be a report, it took ages, so we tried to collectivise everything in one overall approval, with the delegation that it would be up to finance and or legal to look through, if there's any material change risk in terms of what the grant's used for or any risk to the council, then we'd report back. But other than that, it was a look through, yeah, that's 60, it comes to this value, US finance, work on each individual grant, get it approved, signed off and managed.
So if we move to officers just accepting those grants, we just need to find a way of making it all transparent and that's a reporting mechanism for those, do we?
We could possibly, I don't know for details, but we could send the report round members, just say if anybody's interested, here's the list of grants that's been approved under this category, if there's any particular queries, feel free.
I just think that's important, that everybody knows where I just think that's important, that everybody knows what money's coming in, even if it is just recurring grants and it's, you know, not that interesting maybe, but, you know, people would expect we're getting these grants through regularly. But it just needs to be, people need to understand they are coming through, because the public out there don't realise what's coming into the council and what isn't coming into the council, yeah. And also, I guess, I was at a meeting, a subfinance committee meeting where a grant was accepted. And then a month later, when I went to, I think it was a health committee meeting, sorry, a social care committee meeting, it came there again. But I guess acceptance and approval or to report to the members then, it does seem there's another way around. You know, we may have applied, the social care may have applied for that grant in the first instance. But then it went to the subfinance committee, then it came to us as well. So I just think that that needs, we need to understand. And it wasn't high, it wasn't, I'm not sure how what the value was.
But business unit managers jump the gun and they might put something to committee or they might bid for something before giving us a heads up. And sometimes the funders themselves can be very variable in what they want, an early sign up stage, depending on the value, risk, et cetera. A lottery, as soon as we can get clear notification from a business unit manager that there's a bid going in or there's a grant on the horizon, we can advise on what the correct process is. But sometimes they do go ahead of us, or the funder has got unrealistic timetables for, here's a grant, it lands on a Friday and they want it within a few days, signed up, signed off. It's not entirely common, but it's not, it's common enough to notice. So a lottery is down to the funders and the complexities and vagaries of how they, what bids submitted, grant offers submitted, timetables, complexities of the grant agreement, et cetera. But if they get to us early enough, we can advise on what needs doing.
In terms of the LAX, I guess, when a grant does come in and, you know, it is involved a particular area of the city, then the lack in that area just needs to know what is coming into there. And I don't, there isn't a mechanism for that now. I don't know that that happens. I'm a LAC chair and it doesn't, I don't see that coming through.
At the moment, what happens is, certainly with new grants, I mean, they do come in rather rapid fire. So they might be in each of the last, what, six to seven months? We've got about 10 grants a month, varying from maybe 10,000 to 10 million. So literally, as soon as that lands, we determine the correct route under the council's decision-making process and then advise the business unit managers what to do. So individually, you'll be, each committee or relevant officer, et cetera, will be seeing the grant that's arrived in their area that fits within their parameters of approval. So it's a very, primarily based on the fund, it's a very ad hoc process. The more they throw out or the more we bid for, the more that we'll be looking at and determining that goes there, et cetera, et cetera. So that's rather what's going off at the moment. It's difficult to plan for that, because we're, as much as we'd like to, the funders themselves, the government, other funders, they just throw it out. And also, when you get to year end, there's sometimes surpluses of cash from government departments, so they throw it out. So there's not much structure or consistency to how we get the money from the funders and when we get it, which might explain what perhaps you're seeing.
Yeah, Mary, just to pick up on the point you said about transparency. If it is delegated to an officer to accept those grants, the financial level will be such that it will be a decision that needs to be published. So there will be that transparency there as well. Mark's highlighted some of the points that I was going to raise about the fact that we probably can't have a one size fits all solution to all these grants, because there are grants that we don't bid for, that we're just given by government, that says, this is it and this is how you spend it, we don't have any choice. And really, there isn't a decision to be made there. There are others that we're just given that are ring fenced for a purpose, but we then have some choice within that ring fenced purpose about how we spend it. And that probably should sit with members, or at least setting the strategy for how we do that. There is then when grants that we bid for, and sometimes the basis on which we bid, sets how it can then be spent and how do we get member engagement so that at the time we're bidding, so that we ensure that we've not fixed ourselves with what we're spending it on, without that member engagement. And as Mark has said, the timescales sometimes make that difficult in that you can't get to a policy committee to do that. Particularly, as he said, particularly at the end of the year, when the government just wants to get money out of the door. So I think probably what we're looking for here today is some broad principles of how we should approach this. What do we want to achieve from it? And then we'll go away and put wet cloth on our heads and try and think of how we can draft something that makes sense.
Another exciting Christmas task. Councillor Williams.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, earlier this week, the Strategy and Resources Committee made a very important decision to allow grants to be extended over a much longer period. I know from talking to the voluntary sector that they really appreciated that. That gives them a chance to plan their business, especially in the area of recruitment, where volunteers are going back into full-time work because of the cost of living crisis. So they're really struggling. In terms of grants, it seems to me highly logical that the relationship with the voluntary sector is with the policy committee and the policy committee officers. And therefore, the granting of the grants should sit with that policy committee. I understand that when there's, if it's a huge amount of money, there should be some checks and balances. But it really should be, it's what the members fit on that committee to do. And I think it's very important that we follow that through. Thank you.
Yeah, it's about the policy and how we use the funding to set the policies. It's a fair point there, Richard. Councillor Jones, next, please.
Thank you, Chair. I have to agree with councillor Williams, certainly on the voluntary sector and awarding of grants. A lot of those grants will be very small amounts of monies. And it is incumbent on officers to seek the opinion of members who are elected to represent their communities. Those voluntary sectors are organisations delivering services to our communities that we're here to represent. If you do not consult us on that, then you do not know whether you're getting value for money or whether those organisations are appropriate in any context at all. So I think that is something that does need to be reflected in the policies going forward. In terms of the recurrent ones, I am really cautious about accepting custom and practice as a way of accepting those grants. The sheer fact that there's 60 that we constantly accept, and I probably know some of those 60, but I certainly don't know all 60 of them, that does actually kind of worry me a little. And I get that the fact that, as David Hollis has pointed out, that some of those things will be very prescriptive in what they're spent on. But there's a problem there in itself. Like, you mentioned milk, for instance. The council's policy would be that, yes, we'd accept that money for milk, because nobody wants kids to go without milk. We're not Margaret Thatcher, milk snatcher, that's, none of us in here are that. However, we would want that that awarding of that contract for milk would be as locally sourced as possible, so that we can ensure that the investment of that monies goes into our local economy and grows our local businesses. So that's where the elected members may want to have more of a role in to make sure, and scrutiny of, to make sure that the awarding of bids isn't just going simply to the lowest possible common denominator of what's the cheapest and what's the volume we can get. And equally, it could be things as insignificant. And we've had this significantly, this recently would be, do we want a milk contract going to someone who provides milk just in tetrapacks? Why not glass bottles? And there's those little minutiae of those contracts that I think members can give insight into and should actually lead the discussion on. So custom and practice is not something that I'd like. And certainly, understanding those 60 grants better would certainly come a long way. And there's the other caveat, I think we need to be really cautious of, in so much that sometimes, without being disrespectful, officers may be a bit more cautious than members would be, in so much that I certainly know that as a cabinet member, I refuse to accept a grant from government. Now, it was above the threshold that we're currently saying here. If it had been below the threshold, officers may have been inclined to accept that grant because of the risks involved with not accepting it. So that automatic presumption that because a grant falls below a certain level, means that it should be delegated, is a dangerous precedent to go down. Now, as it turned out, we didn't accept that grant and there was no detriment to the city as a result. And the reason for not accepting that grant is there would be an additional fiscal impact on the city that we weren't prepared to pick up, because government was basically picking our pocket. So there's always going to be checks and balances, and I don't think one size fits all at all can fit here. And wherever possible, the ability to scrutinise those decisions needs to come back to the members. I do believe it should go to the appropriate committee, because they will have an overview and strategy on what's going on. For instance, if it was the committee that John and myself sit on, there could be monies from government that's quite substantial about flood defences. Why would we not accept it? Well, we might not accept it because that defence would be detrimental to the city's priorities or the city's decisions on where it wants to go in terms of carbon impact and such like. So I think there's a lot of nuances here that we do need to go over. There is a lot of work that needs to be done on this, I think. So, thank you, Chair.
I don't disagree with those, but just on the expenditure side, what that report doesn't do, for each individual grant, it don't approve any of the expenditure, it just approves the acceptance of the grant. So the actual approval of contracts, bids, tenders, et cetera, would go through the normal processes outside of that. How far that involves members, I don't know. But certainly, it's just to get the acceptance for the grant, that we would be, so that we've got a formal structured approval process, for something that we'd be having anyway. So, but on the expenditure side, as I said, we don't touch that, that's down to the individual services. So what we do is check the grant terms and conditions. If we spot anything that's materially different, a new risk, we'll flag that up with the service. But really, we're trying to get the administrative side signed up and sent off, because there's a new volume of grants coming in on the other side. So that's the sort of parameters we're working with it.
Yeah, thank you. Mark's picked up one of the points that I was going to pick there, that I think it's the money in, it's not necessarily how it goes out. But on your point about delegations to officers, delegations to officers are only applicable if they're within policy or strategy. And so I think there probably is something about, whether it's S and R or individual policy committees, having an overall grants strategy, something like that. You've also, with flood, picked up another point that I was going to mention later, but I didn't want to confuse everything completely. The difference between revenue and capital grants, and it's probably subject to any views here, that we leave capital grants going through S and R stroke finance sub as part of the capital process, making sure that the commissioning of capital projects at the outset sits properly with the relevant policy committee.
The annual, sorry. The annual recurring grants are all revenue. And then, as I mentioned to Robert when we've had a discussion in recent weeks, there's a difference between Sheffield City Council's own internal grants that it makes and pays out to the voluntary sector, which my team don't have anything to do with. These are just exclusively anything where we're on the hook for terms and conditions of other funders. So it's probably worth clarifying that point. Because sometimes, in some discussions, people get confused between the word grant, between what we're giving out from reserve resources and what comes in and is structured by what the funder wants.
Yeah, that's another point of complexity there, Mark, which is grant pots, which at the moment are currently reserved to strategy and resources or finance sub. That's where we are creating from our own resources, which might actually ultimately at some point, well, all our money comes by way of grants, even if it's only the revenue grant. It might actually not be a specific grant that we're using to pass on. We might be creating a grant pot. I would propose also that that has the same, we deal with the same as we do with grants, that if the view is that they go to policy committees to create that, then that's something we can start to look at. That would have to be within the budget framework, so it would have to be from within budget that a policy committee already had. And that is the general delegation to policy committees anyway, in that they can only operate within the budget framework.
Thanks, David. I've got councillor Otten, then councillor Hurst.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, I mean, I just think the, we're getting ourselves a little bit tied up, I think, in terms of roles of the different committees. The finance subcommittee is not there to do finance things. It's, all of the policy committees have a finance role, they all have a budget they hold. And they all spend that budget, either internally, or they might spend it through a contractor in relationship. And I was going to ask, actually, following up from councillor Jones's point about, you know, awarding of contracts and things. You know, contracting a private provider to deliver a service or giving a grant to a VCF organisation to deliver a service, strike me as fairly similar things, and it makes sense for them to sit in the same place. And so it seems ridiculous not to have awarding of grants to achieve things in health or in transport or in education, whatever it is, sat sat with those committees. Because they are the committees that deliver services in that area. They are the ones most likely to understand whether a particular grant to a particular organisation is going to, or a particular strategy of giving grants to that kind of organisation is going to deliver a good outcome for the people of Sheffield or not. And the finance subcommittee and the director of finance and all that, they might have a role in terms of oversight and probity and all that, you know. I kind of hope that happens, whichever committee makes a decision to spend the money. But they're not going to understand the nature of healthcare or transport or whatever it is, the same as the policy committee. So it absolutely has to be in that. And maybe, you know, maybe the finance committee should be called something like the corporate finance subcommittee, because that's, I think that's really what its role is. And even in terms of becoming accountable bodies, we have never said that the policy committees as budget holders are, you know, kind of risk-free, financial risk-free bodies. They are taking decisions that have levels of risk attached to them. Now, yeah, absolutely, if it's a large amount that's in danger of clawback, maybe there should be a threshold here. If you're at risk of a clawback more than X, then it has to go through S and R or finance sub. But I wouldn't even rule out becoming accountable bodies, being within the remit of policy committees or LAX, if that's the appropriate place for a decision like that to be made. So I struggle to see how we didn't do this the first time. Because, you know, as I said, giving a grant to a voluntary sector body is not massively different in terms of weight of price than it is doing it in-house or contracting it out. So can we just get this kind of, get this put right? And let's, again, let's not kind of confuse the policy, which is, and maybe each policy committee kind of has its own strategy for these recurring grants and say, look, we understand what our recurring grant situation is like in this area, and then we're going to review them every however often, they're going to come to, they're going to report back to the committee as to where the money's being spent if we're not actually making a decision each time. Maybe they can do that, and maybe they can be given a pro forma to policy, for each policy committee to fill in or to change. But, yeah, so we're in danger of saying, because it's finance, let's take it away from policy committees and let's do everything in finance subcommittee, and it's not what finance subcommittee is for. I want to be sure that every grant goes to a good bona fide organisation, but I hope that is, you know, a decision for members to make, and judgment of members to make. I hope that somebody's doing due diligence in, you know, on the officer's side each time on that. And that's how we achieve that. And that is not to say it should go to finance sub or S and R each time. Thank you.
Now, I agree that finance sub should only be looking at the corporate risk. I would just put out there that each individual decision to become an accountable body that has a contingent liability, then has an overall cumulative impact, that gives an overall risk profile for the organisation that probably needs to sit in one place, because each policy committee wouldn't have a view of that overarching, that overall risk profile that all cumulatively, all the grants that we accept as an accountable body add up to. We may decide that that's a risk we're prepared to take and have it all down at policy committees.
I mean, it's a completely fair point. I think if you, you know, if each policy committee had a budget, I mean, I don't, maybe it's fine just to leave the accepting of grants with finance sub if that's simpler, but if each policy committee had a budget of, you know, half a million pounds of risk you could take on, then that's a view that would, you know, the finance sub can have a view that they shouldn't have any more than that, couldn't they? And be happy.
Councillor Hurst. Councillor Hurst.
Thank you, Chair. Um, I've listened to this discussion, it's quite interesting. Um, it's, this is a really complex area. I mean, we have some recurrent grants, and we know what the purpose is, and they're attributable to that purpose every year. We have some opportunistic grants that, um, are also attributable to a certain purpose and come with their own strengths and balances. But what I don't think, I would be interested in looking at this piece of work, but what I don't think we ought to be doing is setting up expectations that, um, there is a possibility of, we're talking about a scheme whereby we set out some rules, which, um, grants are formally received by a committee, and which are delegated to officers, and which remain with the strategic body. I don't think we're talking about a land grab here. Um, because, I mean, members make the policy in the first instance, and we have strategies that drop out from underneath that, and then it's up to officers to deliver against those policies and strategies on behalf of the members' framework. And I, I, I think, you know, we have to sit back and consider that that is what we work with, and that, um, we can't, yeah, we, we need to have that separation of, um, a function. And that's why I think we need to look at this delegation and see where, where we get. I know that when I was, in a former life, when I was a cabinet assistant, um, I would work with officers, um, in an assessment process against some, um, awarding of grants to community groups and look at the measures that each one attained, and, and go through the assessment process. But that was there as an, as an overview and advisory. Because, you know, they were saying to me, um, these grants meet the criteria and, and therefore ought to be awarded, but these don't. So we would talk through that process and we would agree on a, on a, a strategy then. It wasn't down to me to say, um, oh, but I like them. There has to be a framework, there has to be that transparency built in, there has to be that process built in. Because then people know that we are delivering against the strategies that we have set out there and, and not making, it goes along. I think, that's not very formal language, but I think, I think it's worth investigating this, but I think there needs to be very clear, um, understanding of, of, of what's happening there. Because at the moment, we don't have processes for some very, um, fundamental things in the transition. We're only just really transitioning across to the committee system. Um, and I, I think we ought to make sure that we're on firm ground and not do anything too. This is, I sound even more risk averse than the most cautious financial officer ever here. But I don't want to damage the reputation of the authority. I want us to, um, be sure that we have an oversight and an overview, um, as members, and input into where it affects our communities and, and the policy areas that we are involved in. But I don't want the, the fiscal responsibility and the prudence and the reputation of the authority to be affected by what we do. There has to be transparency and a process built in there, is what I think I'm, I'm saying.
Anyone got any more, um, comments or questions on this paper? Councillor Lee?
Yeah, um, for me, it's about transparency, that's the first thing, and it's also about accountability. Um, we get grants coming in that we bid for and some that we're given. We get grants that we receive and go out to other organisations in the voluntary sector or wherever that might be, that are very, very significant at times, and we need to have a process to ensure that, that that money is accounted for. And I know there are processes in place, but we just need to make sure those are transparent as well. So whether that involves, um, a, a policy committee taking responsibility for a, a grant, but then, um, some finance having some kind of oversight, so make sure that all the processes have been, have gone through properly. I think that's important. I think in terms of the LAX, um, we don't, I, I think we need to find a mechanism for reporting to the LAX the money that might be coming to their area. Um, at the moment, our internal grants, we don't, that, that is not reported to the LAX. So I don't know necessarily what VCF sectors in my area, in the LAX and my ward even, um, are getting. I mean, I know it's there somewhere and I could go and find it, but it's not reported, um, to us. Um, so when we, and, and some of these organisations bidding for funds to the LAX and to wards, and it would be nice to have a, you know, we need to know what, what monies they are receiving in order to make those other decisions. Um, so there's specific things that come to the LAX, but there are also more general things. Um, you know, if we've got a transport grant coming through that affects, um, the LAC area or award, individual councillors might get consulted, but the LAC in general doesn't, at the moment, would not necessarily be consulted. Um, so we need to just have a discussion and, and some thoughts on that, you know, how we do that. I don't want to make it over burdensome, because it is so complicated, isn't it? But we just need to just understand what needs to come down to the LAX, um, and I mean, I don't want to know about big recurrent grants that come in about milk and whatever. I assume you buy a bottle of milk. I know, I think it's right to source it locally if you can. Um, but I don't know how these things are bought. You know, how do we buy whatever that milk we need for the city? So, anyway, you know what I mean, don't you? What, what comes down to the LAX, but I think the transparency and oversight and accountability is really important.
Thanks, Mary. Councillor Alston.
Uh, thank you. I just wanted to sort of try and clarify what I think we're trying to say. Um, I mean, I think there seems some general agreement that we're trying to make this an open process. And I think the one thing that people, the citizens of Sheffield, if you like, asked of us when we came up with the committee system was that more decisions should be made by a group of councillors in, in the open. And, and therefore making it more publicly accountable. So I think, obviously, when, when the, the officers, and I, I feel for you having to work this out, um, we do need to think differently about grants on different scales and about where they come from, whether they're already predetermined, what they can be spent on. But I think as a general principle, that if, where there is a decision to be made, it should be made at the relevant committee, as low down the scale, if you like, as you can. Um, and any decisions that are made otherwise, so whether that's because it's the same decision and it hasn't changed year after year, and we've agreed that in year one, that we're going to carry this on for five years. Then I think each time it comes up, it could just be in a, you know, in an agenda to note that. And then people can then ask questions if, if they want to. Um, and I think the same goes for, as Mary said, I think she, you know, you're absolutely right. If there's money being allocated to groups within a community from a, a wider grant, then informing the LAX that that money's there, it's, it's about being open and making sure everybody has the, the bigger picture.
Yeah, thank you. I think, I think you're absolutely right. I think this has been a, a really useful, um, discussion this afternoon. And I think it's about, it really shows how, as a council, we are trying to transform to working within our communities and making sure that we are getting that right. And I think probably while we are doing this review, we do need to look at that long list of recurring grants that we can't do a lot with, just so that we have a starting point as a council for where they stand and how they start. And I think that's probably quite a sensible suggestion, so that, you know, even if we're only looking at that, you know, every four, five years or whatever, just so we can make sure that we're happy as local councillors, that they are fit for purpose, that they do still follow our strategic aims, corporate policy, whatever you want to call it. So that they're not just something that's going on in the background, and we're making sure that we are getting best value for money, that we are transparent with all of those. And I think, you know, because we are now working in our local communities, I think LAX do have an important and pivotal role to play in, in how grants are awarded, understanding how grants are awarded. Because ultimately, you know, we will always get community groups coming to us saying, where can I get some money from for this? Is there anything going, you know, we, we get that as local councillors all the time. So understanding who's had what, and that can perhaps help with better partnership working within our local communities and have all sorts of benefits in terms of not duplicating services and all those sorts of things. You know, particularly when money is tight, so, um, there is quite a lot of work to do on this. But I think it's a really important piece of work that we do get done and we do get it right. So really, it's just a matter for members, we have the two recommendations, the second one's broken down into a number of parts. Are we happy that those will, um, that, that, that framework is sufficient to give officers the ability to go away and put something together based on the discussions that we've had this afternoon? I suppose that's the question, um, that we just need to be clear about in light of the, the comments that everyone's made.
I know officers have all been furiously scribbling, so I know they've got lots of notes about, uh, about the points that we've, we've asked them to include, so I am grateful that they've done that. So can I just formally put the recommendations, um, that are on page two of the, um, item eight? Are we all happy for officers to proceed in line with those? Is there anything desperately that we think we need to alter or amend in that place? All happy? Thank you, members. I'm sure we will, um, pick them up if there's anything else. Councillor Alston?
Now, can, can we just, just as much for anybody who's watching from outside, really, just be clear what the process is next? When, and you do have my sympathy, officers, have come up with a new plan. What is, will the new plan go to full council or will it come back here? What's, what's the process?
I would hope it will come back here, but I'll wait to be told. I'm wrong.
Yeah, so this is the, this is the, the place where, uh, we bring it back to. And I think, um, in consultation with David and yourself, Chair, I think probably what we'll look to do is, is, is develop uh, proposals in detailed terms based on today's discussion, and perhaps offer a preparatory workshop or something, so that there can be a, a discussion amongst members about whether that's the, we're capturing things effectively so that the best use of this committee can be achieved when it comes back to this committee.
Yeah, I think that may be, in view of the complexity of it all, I think that may be a really good idea. So, so thank you for offering that. I'm sure we'll be happy to take you up on that. Yeah? Thank you. That just leads us to the date of the next meeting, which will be the 12th of January. Um, so can I thank you all for attending and wish you all a very merry Christmas? Thank you.